Okay. Welcome to the Simsbury Board of Selectment meeting for December 4th, 2023. This is following our swearing-in ceremony, which is why it's starting at 7:00 PM. And I would like us to all rise and say that we believe this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own.
So we always begin our meetings with public audience. And I see that we have one person here tonight for public audience. So it's Joan, if you'd like to come up to the podium, just over there, Mr. Needley. Sure.
Do I have to do something with this?
It's fine.
Okay. Joan Cole, 26th Winkum Drive. As the newly-elected Board of Selectmen enters another chapter of the legislative body of the town, I'm looking forward to a board with good judgment, fairness to the public, and a genuine interest in serving the taxpayers of Simsbury. The board should be respectful toward the public concern that have brought before them and should treat each person with respect, whether you agree or disagree with their content. As a November 13th, 2023, meeting, the outbursts from the board were disrespectful and childish, leading one to believe that they should no longer serve the town as an elected capacity. The assessment of the past town manager by Eric Wellman was inconsistent with the truth, leading to several more Pinocchios on his list of self-serving actions. Sean Askam was always acknowledging the issues with understanding, but the latest vote on whether it was politically correct, and we voted against his own judgment. Sean Askam was politically bullied for selecting Wendy McTheusis on a regular basis that was disingenuous and chug for judgment. Since Sean Askam was elected to serve the public interest, not his own, the new board should be a refreshing voice of the people without any political aspirations, as with the old God. There is a public hearing on the ordinance of prohibited tobacco vaping and cannabis on town property on November 13th, 2023. During the testimony from the public, Dave Bush, Chairman of the Parks and Recreation Commission, was speaking not as an attorney representing his client, but reflected the commission's concern. The original vote on Simsbury Farms was predicated that the golf course would make enough money to support youth recreation sports and all other activities should be self-sufficient. Thousands of dollars have been infused into the Recreation Department year after year by the taxpayers of the town. As Chairman of the Parks and Recreation Commission, Dave Bush's leadership should be focused on the health and safety of the community, not maximizing profits at the expense of the health and safety as priority one. As a result of various comments at the hearing, the Board of Selectmen negated their responsibilities to the residents by ignoring the health and safety issue to the political persuasion and voted only to include cannabis in the ordinance. Now that cannabis use is excluded from town property, the Simsbury Performing Arts was to eliminate the use of cannabis at the concerts. Mrs. Donino, Manager of the Simsbury Performing Arts, has stated that bands will not perform if marijuana is excluded at the concerts. Several performances in the past has made the smoke from marijuana cause reactions from police on duty with headaches and other reactions, along with the patrons of the concert. People have come before the Board of Selectmen to raise their concern with asthma and other health issues. Marijuana is not only used by the band, but also with the patrons. Certain concerts that are revenue-driven by large bands, according to our ordinance, cannot use cannabis on town property and should be stipulated on the purchase form for the concerts. Will there be signage on the property prior to concert? How will the town address this issue of unintended consequences? Recently, the Board of Selectmen voted to approve a $35,000 expense for a mandate to provide an active shooter's safety policy for gatherings of over 6,000 people. The Simsbury Performing Arts is the only organization generating those numbers. Since they are the sole beneficiaries of this gathering, why should the taxpayers foot the bill? Since they are able to stay on this, why should they foot the bill? I would like to report that Chief Boulter is continuing to have me as a sole beneficiary of a babysitting service with the Police Department. Lieutenant Chase has been assigned to review all my observations on the police incident reports. This policy is not only instituted in the Police Department, is the only instituted in the Police Department, Simsbury Police Department, is to create a delaying review of my concerns about certain police activity incidents that should be assessed by the entire public with a phone call to the records room. This policy is inconsistent with the union contract. This management style has led to no confidence vote from over 90% of the departments. The legends of the department would have voted for another no-confidence vote, but the consensus was that nobody is listening to their concern, so why bother? There have been many grievances filed to the police union. Grievances reflect the poor management of the Police Department, as they are the only way to address untenable workplace issues. Chief Boulter listens to nobody, which leads to no dialogue to improve the toxic work environment. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch and Twitter at Joan Cole. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay. The next item that we have every meeting is the First Election Report. Unfortunately, tonight, I was working on my speech for this swearing-in, so I do not have a First Election Report, but I will try to get one over to Tom tomorrow, by Wednesday. On that note, I will turn it over to the urban, our town manager, for his town manager's report.
Thank you very much, Wendy. Brief report on department news and notes. First, from the Culture, Parks, and Recreation Department. Simsbury celebrates, held this past Saturday, November 25th, had record attendance of approximately 20,000 people. The department thanks our presenting sponsor, Yukon Health, as well as the Simsbury Volunteer Fire Company, the staffs of the Simsbury Police Department, Public Works Department, Public Library, and the Culture, Parks, and Recreation Department for making the event safe and fun for all. There were numerous volunteers who worked tirelessly to plan the event this year, led by Committee Chairperson Tara Willerup. And the Simsbury Planning Committee would like to thank all the local businesses and service organizations who financially supported this event or contributed entertainment or volunteers. And if you would like to participate in the planning for the 2024 event, can't begin too soon, please reach out to the Simsbury Culture, Parks, and Recreation Department for more information. Second report from Culture, Parks, and Recreation. The newly-renovated Simsbury Farms Playground, as Wendy mentioned during the swearing-in ceremony, will open this Wednesday, December 6th, at 1:30 PM. All are invited to attend a brief ribbon-cutting ceremony at the playground located at Simsbury Farms, 100 Old Farms Road in West Simsbury. And hot chocolate and cookies will be available to those who attend, but you have to attend if you can. And finally, the Public Works Department. One more reminder, bag leaves will continue to be collected through December 7th, coming up shortly. Residents can also bring their bag leaves and grass clippings to the bulky waste facility during normal hours at no charge. Facility is open Wednesdays and Saturdays, 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And the leaf collection page on the Public Works site has been updated to help citizens determine when collection will occur in your neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Since we only have two returning board members here for liaison reports, do you have a report saying? Okay. Normally, just so everyone knows, I try to go down the line and, you know, ask each selectman to provide a report. If you have one, that's great. If you don't, that's also fine. I didn't think I have one, but I do have one, and I'm just reporting that we reviewed RFPs for the upcoming classification and compensation study, and we'll be going over those on Friday, interviewing people that have applied. And that's something that we'll probably discuss at Personnel Subcommittee and the town manager on our involvement role in that. Another thing I'd like to say before we start selectmen action, just for people who have never watched this meeting or people who have never been to this meeting, most of the items here happen every two years when there's a new board that comes into place. So it's pretty much mostly just business to get the business going for our board this election. So with that, I'm going to move into selectmen action. And the first item on the agenda is the appointment of the Deputy First Selectman. For the charter, this is one of the, the choice of the First Selectman, I couldn't get that word out, and it's in course with Section 411, which basically says the Deputy First Selectman or First Selectwoman will serve as acting First Selectman or First Selectwoman in the event of a temporary absence or temporary disability of the First Selectman or First Selectman. I forgot which way I said that. So I'm very happy to announce tonight that I am appointing Stephen Antonio to serve as Deputy First Selectman. Mr. Antonio is a lifelong Simsbury resident and local business owner. He graduated from Simsbury High School in 1981 and received a bachelor's degree from Bryant University in 1985. Mr. Antonio returned to Simsbury and took over his family's eatery, Antonio's Restaurant, in 1987, an iconic restaurant in Simsbury. He added the sports bar Hoops and Hops in '93 and branched into commercial and residential real estate in the 2000s. He has served on many boards and commissions over the years, being a strong advocate for the residents and business community in our town. This includes being elected to the Zoning Board of Appeals and Design Review Board, where he served as chairman of both boards for many years. He was also a member of the Fair Housing Commission, the Building Code Board of Appeals, and a board member of Simsbury Main Street Partnership. He lives in Simsbury with his wife Lisa, children Catherine, Thomas, and Johnny Antonio, as well as 13 sheep, two dogs, and some mice in the barn he's been eating to a day.
Fair Rent Commission.
So with that, hopefully that. I have to just try my gavel, and that was his joke. I didn't write that joke, so I'm not going to take credit for it. Okay. We have a deputy town manager. Next up is a-
Deputy Mayor.
A deputy mayor. Oh, you're practicing here? Okay. Well, you're a little loose here tonight, Liz. You having some fun? It's the room, it's the atmosphere. Okay. Oopsie. So the next item is a Board of Selectmen rules of procedure. Now, these rules are implemented every two years with the new board, and there's been quite a few changes that we have in here, some updates that Franklin Baro- Baro- Baro Co., how do I pronounce it?
Baruca.
Baruca. He's our management specialist, another Yukon graduate, worked on these with Trish and Tom, I believe, and updated the rules of procedure to bring them up to date with some changes that he actually did some research with other towns across the other municipalities in the state have done. So I'm sure everyone has read them. Before we get into discussion on them, I do want to highlight a couple of things in here, if that's okay? And if anyone out there is interested, you should go to our agenda and read them. There's a new section in here on decorum and standards of conduct for our meetings. It sets some guidance on how the board should behave and also how members of the public should behave at public audience. And we do, we are not taking away anyone's voice if we do say things are inappropriate, because there are certain things that are allowed to be said and to set a tone for our meetings. And so we'll be working on a decorum statement in addition to this. I've talked to our town attorney to try to come up with a statement that works for us with the agreement of the board, and that's how we will start that off. That was one thing I wanted to say on this, and I will like to open this up for discussion. And normally, you can be recognized by the chair, but I also like to go down the line, if that makes it easier to anyone who has any comments, and if you don't, there's no reason to be uncomfortable. So I'm going to start with Curtis. Do you have anything that you'd like to add, or you're okay, you know, just comments? Okay, great. This is what we get.
That's one item.
Sure.
Oh, it was for our meetings. If something's added to the agenda by the two-third vote, it says, except in emergency and unusual circumstances, action will not be taken within the agenda. It was so placed until the next meeting. Is that saying that if we by two-thirds vote and an agenda item to our meeting that we're in, we can't take action, that item is just a discussion? Is that?
That's what that says, unless it's an emergency item.
So that's interesting.
But I don't, I don't, I think that's been in, been there in the past, and I think it's pretty much been ignored.
It has been ignored. I suppose that's been denied. I mean, people bring things to the table, and we tend to vote on it.
I think it's fine to act at the same meeting that items are-
Agreed.
Are brought, so you can modify that, make an amendment.
Sure. Yeah, so it's, yeah, not an emergency, it's brought to the two-thirds vote. Yeah. We don't need to, right, scratch that part? Would that be appropriate, Tom, to scratch, accept an emergency, action will not be taken? Okay, this, well, we can vote on it, we're going to vote on it anyway. I'm just asking now. Steve, you have any comments on that?
I just have a question about the five-minute rule for speaking at the town meeting and public, public participation and the sign-up. And if the sign-up is over four people, because twenty minutes divided by five, in excess of four, would be appropriated for a lesser amount, how's the sign-up going to happen? Is there going to be a podium as people enter to sign up? And that's the limit now. If you don't pre-sign up, you can't speak at the meeting the way I understood it.
You can speak at the meeting.
Yeah, we were thinking of having, having some kind of a stand at the entrance to the main meeting room, so people would sign up. And then for people who missed that, when they come to the podium to speak, they can, they can sign up at that point, indicating their name and address.
Right. I guess my question really is how we would divide the time if there's a number of people that we would have to reduce the amount of speaking time? Or am I getting into the weeds?
No, well, I asked this question, we, the 20 minutes is just a guideline. We normally, if we have six people, we don't usually have the minutes. I think if it got very lengthy and we were here for an hour of public audience, we could limit the time, you know?
Okay.
It's, it's, we don't calculate, I've never done that, calculated how many people were here times five and said, we're going to talk for three minutes, because most people come prepared, knowing that they have five minutes to speak. So it's kind of a hard, you know, I don't, it's kind of a hard thing to say, edit your, your speaking while you're sitting.
Interesting, yes.
Yeah, I didn't know that. So I think it's been working, the signing in is new, and I think part of that is to reckon, to get a document that says, so we have a true history of who's been here and where they live, even though I know we have. Good, Tom.
I would say it helps with the minutes per spelling.
Yeah. So, you know, I think, I think we're okay the way it is, and the way I see it too is the podium out front, so we can have people who come early, get their names on the list first, so they can go first, and then also have a list at the podium if you did not get a chance to sign in. That's my understanding.
Clarification, it actually says a period of not less than 20 minutes. So it's not a limit of 20 minutes that's divided by five minutes, you know, per speaker. It's a period of not less than 20 minutes is set aside for public audience. So then it leaves room for it to go, so if you have six speakers at five minutes each, it's written in the rules to be allowed that time.
And a normal, in my, certainly is a contentious point, where there's 20 people to speak, really. I'm not worried about six.
Yeah.
It's 20 people.
If there is 20, then we have the power to limit the minutes to three minutes.
Great, and that's my understanding.
Diana?
I just want to voice my appreciation for the decorum statement and standards of conduct allowed for this board and as well as audience members.
Thank you.
I just appreciate that.
Great.
We'll have a decorum statement.
It's a good addition. Kevin?
Do you need a motion on the floor for us to discuss this first? My normal understanding, we'd want a motion and a second for the purposes of discussion?
Well, we will, we'll have a room for discussion. We normally do a casual discussion before we move.
That's fine. I, so in the section here, I was looking, and I didn't see a reference to, you know, Robert's Rules or anything too, which I think, you know, would be something. I just didn't find it, so if it's there, that's fine.
It is in here.
Okay, thank you. And then-
It's Rule 162-122 at the beginning.
At the very top.
Yeah, rules of procedure, board adopts Robert's Rules of Order as the general guide.
Okay, thank you. And then in the section where it talks about the decorum and standards of contact, no issues here, but it does say that we're not allowing any comment or speech, which is in Robert's Rules, to, to impugn the motive or character integrity of any individual, and we'll enforce that on the meeting. I'm, I'm just asking you as a, as a chair, Wendy, if that's your expectation, that we'll enforce that?
That is the plan.
Okay. And in the other sections and the enumerated sections here, it says, in the event that an individual breaches the standards of contact, the chair shall order that person to cease the offending conduct, and then it talks about removing them from the meeting. In there, it changes the language from referring to board members and members of the public separately, and just as a sitting member of the board, it would be in my expectation that the sections five, six, and seven refer to members of the public, and that you wouldn't remove a member of the board if there were a disagreement or a discussion without a vote of the board seated. Just for purposes of clarification, I'd offer an amendment to say that members of the public as opposed to individual.
Okay. What if there was a member before that did a breach of the-
I don't think it would be, I don't think it would be a right to remove a seated member. I think that we can absolutely have those disagreements, and that I would expect that all of us as peers treat each other respectfully, just like is included on here. I have no concern about that. Just, I would, I wouldn't say that it would be consistent with the rules and responsibilities that you would, you would dismiss a seated, seated member of the board, especially if it was on an issue that was contentious.
Okay, so you're saying one and two are really referring to board, reference board members the rest?
I would have the language in sections, in numbers five, six, and seven be changed to read members of the public, just like one, two, and three.
Sure. Got that?
Other than that, I appreciate the willingness to adopt this. These rules will be adopted, you know, by vote on the board, I imagine, and that at any time during the cycle, we could bring a motion if it's proper to amend the rules of conduct.
Look, so, so in the past board, we had a work group when there were changes that were wanted by the, by the board, and that is something I was looking to do.
Great.
If we want to do that, we chose not to do that at this point in time, unless we decide that we don't want to accept these. That is, of course, we could take. That's the prerogative of the board.
Just want to make sure that the permanence of this is that there's discretion of board members here, it's not for the entire biennium. If there's a minor change or something that we realize later that we need to adjust, we can do that.
Sure. And the one thing about the, the stability and the moving people out of the meeting and things like that, that's going to be a new process that's going to happen, so it's not going to happen overnight, because we're going to be getting used to having in what people's, the decorum that takes place here. So we don't have a mic that we can shut off, we don't have things like that, so we're going to have to figure that out, how that's going to work.
Thank you. I think the public has a right to bring, redress grievances and all that stuff. That's what you're right, and I appreciate that. So no further comment from you.
And one other thing I wanted to highlight in the, in the rules that is new is the consent agenda. So we didn't have this previously, and basically what this will do is put together items that are, don't require discussion, such as the tax refund, potentially grants that come out that are normal, you know, regular, without any matching money, and those, yeah, consent agenda, and the board members with anyone who disagrees or wants something moved out of that for discussion will have that ability. Okay. So I think that's it. The one thing I do want to mention on the rules of procedure, let me find where I put that cover sheet, is that the referral to the personnel subcommittee was something that was historically done, which I didn't find was appropriate, because when there, we, it's been done in the last two terms, it wasn't done prior to that. And the reason I questioned it was because when we had changes that came up on our board last time, we formed a work group to work on it, rather than turning to the personnel subcommittee. If the personnel subcommittee is the correct place to address the rules of procedure, which is what Kevin brought up, if we wanted to make changes, I would want to understand where that should go and if that would be the role of personnel. So at this point in time, I would just, I'm going to ask for a motion here to move effective December 4th, 2023, to approve the proposed Board of Selectmen rules and procedures with the changes that will be here tonight. And I'm looking for someone to move that.
So we'll move to a-
Thank you. And a second? Diana, a second? And now, if there's any additional discussion, formal discussion?
I would like to see the final language before voting on it. I have no problem with the rules, you know, here, and I understand that, you know, everything that we've said is, is, you know, will be included, but I don't know that we can vote on it unless we actually have the final language.
Well, I'm comfortable with the changes, so if we want to take a vote on it as it stands.
I'll second that. I think we acknowledged that the changes would be-
Would be made by the man, and we'll get them. So, okay, thanks, Kevin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I voted aye.
Thank you. Okay, because I can't see down there. Okay. Okay. So that passes, thank you. Thank you. The next item is the Board of Selectmen regular meeting schedule. Everybody can look at the calendar, we've gone through the calendar, we've seen the calendar. We have some months where we only have one meeting due to either holidays or schedules, and it gives, kind of gives the town time to catch up, and it gives us a little time to regroup and, you know, have some vacation in summertime. So if everybody's looked over the schedule, doesn't have an issue with the schedule, I'm looking for a motion effective December 4th, 2023, to approve the Board of Selectmen 2024 regular meeting schedule as presented.
I'll move to adopt the 2024 regular meeting schedule as presented.
Thank you. And for a second, Curtis, second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
I have just a point of clarification. I want to make sure that it's listed in there. You said that these are held in-person or via Zoom? Zoom option?
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any intentions? Okay, this passes unanimously. Okay, the next item I am going to turn over to my new deputy, and I will leave the room and if somebody will come get me. Oh, it's been done?
Wendy, do you want to do the appointment of board committee and-
Oh, that was first, sorry.
I'm appointing myself to do whatever I want. Here, this is still you.
Oh, shoot. Sorry, I didn't swear, people. Okay, First Selectmen's Point, Pointers, Boards and Commissions. So I have reached out to everyone, and people have provided their interest in serving on liaisons and on boards and commissions, so that is attached. And anybody, any questions, concerns? Curtis, Heather?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yeah.
Diana?
No.
No.
Okay. A couple of things I wanted to clarify. Retirement Plan Subcommittee, people are a member of the committee, is that correct? Not a liaison?
Correct.
And is that true for the, there's another committee on here, oh, the Hometown Hero, you're a voting member, correct?
Correct.
And Open Space, I, the charter has the chair, the First Selectman is chair, because I'm also a voting member. Okay, thanks, I just want to clarify that. The other positions are liaison positions, which means, you know, we should try to get to the meeting, watch the meetings, represent the board at the meetings, bring back information to our board. If you're asked to speak and weigh in, some boards let you weigh in, some boards don't let you weigh in. So looking, oh, there's no action. Okay. It's my appointment, so there we go.
That's right.
So thanks for stopping me from walking out. Yes.
I have a question.
Sure.
Because I know that there's one that's, that was, and it may be part of the, and I apologize, it may be part of the reauthorization of temporary committees.
Oh, yeah.
But if there's not, I know that's a separate agenda item. If there's not one listed here that used to be, I should probably look at it there.
Yeah, which one?
Community who care.
It should be on there, I thought I saw it. Okay, so it was on there. Was it on the one online?
I didn't see it.
We took that, yeah.
Community, you know what, it's actually under action requested under the, so I will table this, to reauthorization of temporary committees. So we'll get to that.
Oh, right, 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 right. Thank you. Thank you.
My apologies.
Okay. Okay, so there's no actual requirement here, but yes, I remember there was reading of public community here, and I had some information on that.
Okay, great.
Okay, am I allowed to turn it over to Steve now?
You have to. Do you have to do anything?
No, it doesn't, there's no vote on that. No, it's my assignment. Okay, now I'm going to go, I'm not going to embarrass myself.
Okay, so continuing down our list, item E, under selectmen action, action, is the stipend for first selectmen. I reached out to Lee on this to try and find out what other towns are doing to make sure that we are being fair and equitable with the position as part of the stipend. Lee, if I'm not mistaken, there really was no exact setup like Simsbury in that list that you had sent, meaning that we have a first selectmen that is legislative head, but a town manager that is the executive.
It's fairly unique, yes.
So I guess the point that where I'm going here is there is no one else to look for for what the sort of going rate is, for lack of a more professional term. Our stipend for the first selectmen was dictated in our town charter when we came out with it, the town charter revision eight years ago, when we switched to the town manager form of government. At that point, we set the budget for $10,000 per year. There's a little bit of an anomaly with that one that I'd like to ask you, Lee. In as much as $10,000, by 12 is $833, and I believe the stipend is actually $700 per month, or did I get that wrong?
That's incorrect. We pay that stipend at the rate of $833.
Okay, so it is in fact.
Yeah.
So my main concern is that with everyone, we know that there's been a significant change to the cost of living over the past eight years, which is the last time we revisited this, and I'd like to at least discuss, see where everyone is at potentially changing or rather raising this level of compensation to cover the cost of supplies that the first selectmen has in organizing and preparing for the meetings. Lee, forgive my naivety, but do I make a motion before we can discuss it, or can we just discuss it?
You can do either. It's generally appropriate to make a motion, have a second, and then have a thorough discussion on that.
The reason I am stumbling here is I don't have a number in my head to make a motion, so would the motion be to discuss the stipend for the first selectmen?
No, you don't need a motion to discuss it, you can just discuss it and then.
And then we come up with a number.
Come up with a number through your discussion, and then have a motion and a second.
Right, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, well, seeing as Wendy did this going down the line, I'll follow same suit, which just puts Curtis in the horse seat.
Yes, I mean, I think it hasn't changed in the last eight years. I think inflation, you know, the cost of going up. I'd be comfortable with like 10%, 12% increase.
Heather, what's your opinion on the subject?
I'm also comfortable with paying for some of this. I do think it's been a number of years since this condition was quite in place.
Would you like to comment on the number that Curtis put out at 10% to 12%? Do you think that's high, low, or accurate? It's not a matter of me, this is just discussion.
No, I can think about it, I can think about it. I think that's appropriate.
And Diana?
I've got my calculator out, of course.
Of course.
In discussing 12%, for example, that would raise it to 11,200, and do we feel that that's an appropriate amount as an increase? What is the general cost of living increase over the?
Last year was the worst one at 8.5%. Preceding that, it averaged 3%.
Right. So if you, I mean, I would be comfortable with 12%.
Okay. Kevin?
So I'm very comfortable in making sure that we pay our town staff well, and it's the best way to recruit and retain highly qualified folks. I don't see any previous conversation about increasing the stipend for the first selectmen. I value the job and the role that it plays here. I think that a $10,000 stipend is appropriate, but I would encourage this board at budget time to make sure that if there's direct costs that are incurred by the first selectmen, that they can seek reimbursement just like any other individual. So if there's extra printing that they need, or binding binders to keep organized, or other travel that they need to do, that they can seek reimbursement through those means, and I think that it's not unreasonable to have this discussion, but I'm comfortable with the amount that's been set here, not because I don't think that the job is, you know, worth it, but because I think that it is worth it, and that's why we've offered a stipend to help offset the costs of doing that job. But I am in favor of paying our town staff well, but I don't think that this is a staff position, and I am comfortable with the 10,000 that was set.
Okay, just a further clarification between the two of us, though. It's my understanding that stipend is the money she utilizes for that, so it'd be sort of giving the position a double dip type thing if she can be reimbursed for costs because those are supposed to be covered by the stipend. So you can't really say you can bring some of those costs back for reimbursement, as I understand it, please feel free to expand on it.
The discussion of the board on sending a stipend for the performance of the duties and what you do with that is different than incurring direct costs and seeking reimbursement. So I'm comfortable with the 10,000.
Steve, I can just make two points. Number one, the current year adopted budget has stipend of $10,000 in it, so if you do decide to increase the stipend at this point, you're adding to this year's budget, although it seems like you're talking about a fairly minor adjustment, you would be adding to this year's budget. Number two, the first selectmen and any members of the Board of Selectmen, we do have a budget within the Board of Selectmen budget for reimbursing all members of the Board of Selectmen for any cost you incur that you'd like to seek reimbursement for, and we pay those promptly upon, you know, submission of proper receipts, et cetera. The third point I'd like to make, although the form of government with the Board of Selectmen and the first selectmen and the manager is fairly unique, the way I view it, the first selectmen is equivalent to mayor or chair of the council. And in survey we completed at your request, most of the communities do not pay a stipend for the chair of the council or the mayor or the first selectmen. We found what may be one example where they are given a stipend, a general stipend, but in most cases, and this is, this is true in my experience in Wintersfield and Enfield as well, as well as the surrounding towns of Newington and Rocky Hill, that all members of the town councils in those communities are unpaid for their services. Reimbursements for direct costs certainly, but their volunteers are unpaid, so I guess I would ask you to keep that in mind as you're discussing this item.
I do, I do acknowledge that, but I do also want to reiterate, nobody else has the first selectmen slash town manager set up.
That's correct.
So we truly are not. This is your goal, test, you know, the community. And Manchester actually compensates all.
Yes, yes.
So at least I'm not throwing that out. Well, I am somewhat, oh, I'm sorry, Diana, yes?
I, point of order, if we adopt this as standing currently, is this something that we could revisit at budget time to increase it at that point?
Absolutely.
So we can adopt this as standing under the current budget currently, but then at the new budget, increase the stipend at that time?
Yes.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have?
I think after Lee's comments, that it is best to approve what we have in the next election, only because the money is not moved in this budget.
I agree, and I wasn't aware, to be quite frank, about that we could be reimbursed for, not myself personally, but any other member could be reimbursed for costs of supplies, office supplies. With that being said, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move that effective December 4th, that we approve the first selectmen's annual stipend in the amount of $10,000.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nobody left to vote against or abstain. Who wants to go get Wendy? Shall I? Is that part of my job?
Job security right there.
Wendy? Your return is required.
House locker, I've been out before. Got to examine the storage room. One over there. It's pretty cool.
Yep, so we are up to leather S, if you have zoom control. Or the chair.
Thank you. Okay, reappointment of town council and labor employment pension. So we have three council people for the town. We have our general town attorney, Bob DiCrescendo, who's been with the town since 2008. We have a labor and employment council, which has been Mike Harrington, and also his firm does our pension. And we also have Tom and Conley, who handle our contracts. What is in here is an ask to renew the contract for Bob with an increase of $10,000 to reappoint Harrington with some scheduled changes over the next three years, and also the bond council at Tom and Conley. So I wanted to open this up for some discussion. I'd like to ask, Heather, do you have some comments? Because I'm not sure if you want to, if there's anything you have to add tonight.
Oh, I do actually, I have some comments on this. I would like to discuss possibly going after RFPs for perhaps the labor council to start. You know, I think both for a long time have been working for us and doing a good job, but, and they may perhaps after an RFP, but I just think, like anything, it's good to review after sort of period of time, and I wanted to discuss possibly looking at the labor so that for now, seeing that Bob's team does offer some counsel, it would be a moment of change in Tommy.
So is that, so, that's a great question. We talked, I'd asked that earlier about that. We had said we could do a month by month type of thing, is that, and then if we decided to potentially do an RFP, we could put that out, or is, because if we do this tonight, we're committing to 2025 with Mike Harrington's firm?
Yes, the proposal, the proposal is a two-year extension of the contract, a slight increase in the rate from what's been this year, and then suggested increases for the following years. So you could do a month-to-month extension, I guess if you decide to do that, I recommend that during that month-to-month extension, perhaps do that at the increased rate that's asked for, for the balance of time it would take to go through an RFP process and make a decision for the balance of time.
Let's see what other answer that. Would you want to ask that?
Oh, I just wanted to ask, so with our, the proposed retainer and then the hourly rate, how close are we in our budget projections each year on what we actually spend on legal fees versus what we project for, and how far do we usually go for the retainer?
We do, we do not, we do not have a retainer for the labor council.
Oh, no, I mean for, I'm sorry, for Bob's, where you guys.
For Bob, it's strictly the retainer each year, but she has been budgeted at $100,000 since 2008, and Bob will only bill us for extraordinary items outside of that retainer. So generally, it's pretty close, it's pretty close to the $100,000. The only other exception would be if a special counsel needs to be appointed because Bob, Bob's firm has a conflict of interest on a particular matter, and we have an example as a communication tonight where Bob's firm has a conflict related to an item on the zoning commission, so he's indicated that he's appointing a special counsel outside his firm to represent the zoning commission in that matter. So that'll, there'll be some additional costs related to that outside the retainer.
Does anyone have any other input?
Do we know that they're willing to commit to us on a month-to-month, and is it at the same rate or an increased rate? Do we know that?
We have not had that discussion.
Okay.
So we don't, we don't know.
Okay.
I actually was, I was going to comment on and ask how much work Bob does above the retainer, because he does spend a lot of time with us, and he does offer, and that with us a lot, but it sounds like he pretty much sticks to the retainer of the fees.
We do budget for over, like a litigation line, we budget for about $11,000 a year. Some years it's not touched, and some years it's like over that, just kind of depends on if we have anything that really gets super litigated, basically, for other terms.
Okay. Oh, go ahead.
Can we break it out, so we're talking about each firm individually?
Yes, there's three separate, three separate motions before you.
Okay.
So we could do that, and then we could have a discussion on each one if you prefer. Why don't we do it that way?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion effective December 4th, 2023, to reappoint the firm of Updike Kelly and Spelacy, PC, as town attorney for a two-year term through December 1st, 2025 pursuant to section 706 of the town charter, and for interim town manager Lee Erdman to execute the engagement letter.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second, Heather, any further discussion on that motion? Or discussion?
Okay, so I hope that's what you're saying?
No, any discussion?
No, well, Bob has been a, from my vantage point and what I've seen, he's been a good counsel to us, and I think he's integral to a transfer. I don't think we can get a viable RFP if we want to consider alternatives to Bob. That's why I asked if he could be broken out, because the other ones I think are the type of contract that maybe I would perhaps be interested in seeing what else is out there, and also, not to say the competitive rates about what there is, but I just wanted to vocalize that I think Bob is sort of ingrained in Simsbury right now, and for continuity purposes, I think the 10% increase is fair and reasonable in the environment we're living in.
And I would like to comment that I agree that the 10% increase from 2008, that's 15 years, I think that's been, he's been respectful of when he charges us, so I would plan to vote in favor of Bob. So at that point, I'd like to, any other comments? I'd like to ask for a vote. Do we have, yes, I'm in second, yeah, another bit. Okay, all those in favor of Updike Kelly and Spelacy? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that motion passes. The next item is Ford Harrison, and this is our labor council, you know, they do the labor, they do employment, and they do pension, which is, which is pretty critical to the town experience that they bring to the table. So I'm going to ask for a motion effective December 4th, 2023, to reappoint the firm of Ford Harrison LLP as labor and employment council, and as pension council for the town of Simsbury for a two-year term through December 1st, 2025.
For the purposes of discussion, I'll be. For the purposes of discussion, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, any?
Second?
Okay, so for formal discussion on that item?
If I may, I, I like Lee's approach of giving the, are they asking for an increase?
Yes.
I, I, I would agree to the increase out of respect, but I also would put a RFP out for seeing what other firms can offer us, and set a realistic timeline of what the board has a consensus of what a response would take, because obviously, it's not like picking up a product at a retail store, this is more nuanced. So
Okay.
I, I would say six months, just as a random stick in the sand, would be the extension to the existing contract that was viable, is it, Lee?
Uh, you can certainly go through an RFP process and make a decision within six months, yes.
Okay. They're looking to continue the rate of 285 an hour for the duration of this fiscal year through June of 2024 anyway, and their, their rate increase would be for fiscal year '24, '25, and then an additional increase '25, '26.
That's the one I'm pushing with, yes.
Yes. So at this point, we could look at continuing at the 285 through fiscal year as we collect RFPs.
Okay. My, my comments on this are a couple concerns as the pension council, because that includes our pension council.
Yes.
But we have our pension subcommittee starting meeting tomorrow, and not sure how involved the need for the pension council is at this point in time, or may they come into play? Just something, I don't know.
Um, I can state that our pension council, part of the Ford Harrison team, is in the process, as we're speaking right now, of updating the language in our pension plan. That work is expected to be completed by the end of the calendar year, end of 2023, and it is, pension work is very complex work, it's not the kind of thing we could bring in-house and do staff-wise. So, and how many firms are there out there that provide a combination of labor, employment, and pension council? I really don't know, but we'll find out through an RFP process.
Did you want to add something to that?
So we did use a different term up until a couple of years ago, they were not as responsive in time, and I believe they actually cost more, and then Mike Harrington said he has one at his firm that does that, so that's how we landed on it in Ford Harrison for pension.
Okay.
Just for clarification, I'm not saying we won't go with him, I'm just saying it's something we should revisit, just, I don't know enough about options personally.
So I, I, what I'm hearing is a friendly amendment to the motion that will authorize the town manager to extend the contract through the end of the budget year for the purposes of seeking an RFP for that council.
I, I did have one more comment that I wanted to make for discussion.
I'm sorry.
A couple more things that I wanted to say is, one of the things is that there, there isn't no minimum, I don't think there's any minimum billable hours for Mike Harrington's work, and this is a, when I went to the May, is that we have a new town manager coming on who may be experienced and able to take on a lot of this labor negotiation, or, maybe, okay, collective bargaining work, and so I, I'm actually not, I, I thought, originally I'd asked to pursue, you know, a different council, I'm actually not in favor of it right now, given Mark coming on, and my thinking was that, you know, I, I would consider extending it for a year, but I, I was also thinking that we could just renew it at the two-year point, but start an RFP process after this year, so that we have someone lined up for the next organizational meeting in 2025, to give Mark time to come on board and to see how much labor and employment work we use with Harrington's firm, but that, those are my comments. So if you'd like to re, could you restate your?
So I'll, I'll say, that's what I thought I heard, the, the friendly amendment there too, hearing what you've just said though, Wendy, I, I have to say, I don't know that it serves us any differently, extending it up to a full year. It seems reasonable to me that if we're satisfied with the services, and even if partway through that contract that we're unsatisfied with the services, we can always renegotiate or, or put out an RFP, and we can start that RFP process plenty of time and early, too, for, for the end of the biennium as well. I was hearing that Steve said that he wanted some time, and I thought that it was fair to continue on as Diana pointed out, through the end of the budget year, and allow the town manager at the time to conduct an RFP and to extend the contract at the new rate that they've, well, actually, it's not the new rate, at the current rate. So that's, that's all my friendly amendment was, to extend it through the end of the budget year and authorize the, an RFP search.
Okay, well, I, I, what I would suggest is we make, read the motion as it stands, and then we can put another motion on the table for the change, if people don't pass this motion, is that?
For the two years?
For whatever.
The original motion?
I'm gonna put the original motion on the table. I'm gonna look for a motion effective December 4th, 2023, to reappoint the firm of Ford Harrison LLP as labor and employment council and as pension council for the town of Simsbury for a two-year term through December 1st, 2025.
I already made that motion, I'll make it again.
Okay, thank you. I thought I commended it before.
No, we, we didn't, but that's okay.
Any further discussion on that motion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, and all those opposed, they nay.
Hold on.
Yeah.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Are we voting on continuing them to 2025 or?
Yes, that's the motion on the table.
Yeah, so I'm looking for your.
So this says it's not going forward.
Yeah, but.
The real amendment.
Yeah, this word.
This is not amended.
I'm reading the first as is, if it fails, then we can put another motion on the table to.
Right.
To serve.
So I'm voting against.
Okay, so, so, right, that's what I'm asking, so against, the nays.
Nay.
One, two?
How many?
Four, okay, so we have four to two, so that fails, okay? Let's just see what Ken says, is this in order? Okay, Kevin, do you want to put that, well, you didn't make it, why don't you make the motion that you want?
No, you do it, Stephen. My screen went off.
I didn't know this was gonna be so complicated.
I will make a motion that, I move that we continue with Ford Harrison at the proposed current rate of 285 through the duration of the fiscal year 2024, June 2024, with a possible extension if we choose at that point, uh, uh, under the new rates, while giving us, allowing us the time to collect RFPs and do a, a search.
Six months.
No, I can, I can give a second, right?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, do you want to take the vote on that, since you made the motion?
Do we have any discussion on this motion? Any other further discussion? All those in favor of adopting this amended motion to extend through fiscal year June 2024, please raise your hand or say aye for me.
Aye. I'm familiar with, with not the chair calling the question, but I understand the, the reasoning.
I gave it the courtesy.
Thank you.
Any other motion?
Thank you. Any, any opposed? Any extension of the motion?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll, I'll say nay, just as I voted the other way.
Okay, so we have five to one, and the motion passes?
Okay, okay. Okay, the next item is effective December 4th, 2023, to reappoint the firm of Paulman and Conley LLP as bond counsel for the town of Simsbury for a two-year term through December 1st, 2025. Thank you.
Second.
And any further discussion? Should I wait for Curtis, or?
No.
All those in favor, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes five, two, zero. Okay, get to the next item. Okay, so the next item is the, the reauthorization of the temporary committees, which is where we have. Here it is, okay. So in every annual meeting, there are boards and commissions that are set up that need to be restarted at this meeting. Here is the list, there was some information on community for care that Tom had reached out to Kristin, Kristin on, and whether or not we want to continue community for care is a question. I did reach out to Lydia Tadone, who's the chair, and she had, I think she has some, still has hopes for this committee, and that they have a meeting currently scheduled for January 10th to see what their charter, what they want to do in the next year, and what the membership looks like. So I was leaning towards leaving, just sharing my thoughts, leaving community for care on the table until they have that January meeting to see if they have membership and people interested in moving forward, to give the members a courtesy that are on the commission, and at that point, if they decide that there's no mission there, they can, they can come back to the board and get rid of them, I guess is the answer. I'm looking for other comments on that, on any of these items?
A comment on community for care, I, I think my concern about continuing it is respecting those who are trying to make it succeed and the current members, however, they're struggling to keep members, they're struggling to staff it, even amongst the current members they have, they often have absentees and they can't make a quorum, and so much of the work has fallen on social services staff, and I'm not sure that's then truly serving the, the purpose of that commission, or, you know, it, it, if, if it's supposed to be an appointed commission, and you have members who are appointed to it and, and supposed to be serving the town, but yet all the work is falling on staff, then I'm not sure that it's fulfilling its mission and its purpose.
Okay.
It hasn't met in over a year. Then, no, let me rephrase that to, they have not had a quorum in over a year, so it's almost better to have it in the job description, I concur with Diana, to have it understood that town staff has to allocate time for this, instead of leaving it as a maybe out there when the track record seems fairly decisive, that they haven't even got a quorum in over a year.
Okay, all right, so, are, are there, is there any discussion on any of the other items on the list? Because what I'll do is amend the motion. I did have questions on the DEI council. I asked this question, and they have four subcommittees, at least four subcommittees, and the question was, do the subcommittees end with the, with the term, or do they continue? Do we let them stay in place because we're letting the council stay in place, because they are active? So I do want to review those subcommittees though, because we've been talking about the housing subcommittee, they pretty much presented to us at the last meeting, they're recommending moving that to what we hope to do with the board. They have a data subcommittee, which we're discussing, and they're gonna bring to the board whether or not they're gonna actually, we're gonna actually move forward with the data plan, so I'm just making that known here that those subcommittees may or may not end up continuing as we go forward. So what I will do is, I'm gonna amend this motion effective December, ask for this motion December 4th, to reauthorize the following temporary committees, with members' terms being co-terminus with the Board of Selectmen, it'll include the Business Development Committee, Sustainability Committee, Hometown Hero, Juvenile Review Board, Simsbury DEI Council, Technology Task Force, and Youth Services Advisory Board, and I will take off continuing for community for care. Anything, a motion?
Second.
Second, any further discussion on that, Diana?
Just a quick question, so the, the ones that are, we have on the assignments that were previously handed out, if they are not listed here, does that mean they are not up for reauthorization at this time?
What is not listed on?
So I'm looking at, like, Design Review Board, a Performing Arts Center.
Performing Arts Center is a, is a liaison, that's not our board, so that's not a, we won't control that.
And zoning is designed review.
Got it. Oh, right, I knew that mention.
Design Review Board, that's not a.
That's a committee of zoning.
Of zoning.
Owns it.
Right. Okay, so I just wanted to make sure I was looking at this list that we have here for assignments versus this.
So you'll take off the community for care assignment? It was not on the system. Okay, so, motions. Ask, I'm gonna ask for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that motion passes. And the last, let me get to one, is the tax refunds, this is always our favorite item of the agenda, it's usually at the beginning of the agenda, but it's at the end tonight. So I'm going to ask for a motion effective December 4th, 2023, to approve the presented tax refunds at the amount of $2,505.14, and to authorize interim town manager Lee Erdman to execute the tax refunds.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm at, there's an item here from Kristin, this came a little before, but it's a, it's a donation from Valley Simsbury Church, they operate out of Henry James, is that true, Tom?
It's a satellite for the main church, if you will, if that's the right term, is in Ammon, if I'm not mistaken, but they have the satellite church at Henry James and Moore.
Okay, because I was interested, I looked that up, I don't know if anyone has any comments on this, but I am looking for a motion effective December 4th, 2023, to accept a donation from Valley Simsbury Church in the amount of $1,800 for the purpose of supporting Simsbury Community and Social Services Department's food pantry program.
I'll make that motion with our thanks.
Second?
I'm second with thanks.
Okay, all of us, say aye. Okay, so now we get into the appointments and resignations, we have an appointment to Public Building Committee, this came from the DTC, and we're asking for a motion effective December 4th, 2023, to appoint Daphne Griswold as a regular member of the Public Building Committee.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. I didn't say aye either, but passes. Now we have this one, I don't know if we want to, we have the resignation from Steve Antonio from his boards and elected.
Not all boards. Everything but this board.
Looking for a motion retroactive to December 3rd, 2023, to accept the resignation of Steve Antonio as a regular member of the Zoning Board of Appeals and Building Code Board of Appeals.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain. All these reviews.
One extension. Okay, the last item is the review of the minutes, just to note that no one was here for the act of the meeting, so there really won't be, well, we just, there was an amendment made to include the item on the police, and it was highlighted in there, so those minutes are good to go. And the November 13 minutes, the only person at the meeting was Heather, and do you have any comments?
Heather, any changes?
Okay, so those stand as they're written, and with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.